Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, May 23, 2011. The time being 6:30. I will call the meeting to order. This is the reorganization meeting for the school committee. We welcome two new school committee members. This is Susan Raveli and Mr. Steven Anderson. And at this time, we will hold nominations for the chair for the next school year. And at this time nominations are open. Mrs. Coonan?
I motion to nominate Brenda Ennis as chair.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second.
Point of order first, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson?
I would like to make sure that both are sworn in and registered.
Yes.
We had this problem once before. And if they're not, they can't vote.
They both are.
All right.
Yes. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Mike Peterson for chair.
Mr. Anderson nominates Mr. Peterson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Two names and nomination. Is there any other nominations? If none, nominations are closed. We have two names. First one nominated is Mrs. Ennis. All those in favor of Mrs. Ennis as the chair for the upcoming year? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three ayes, two noes. All those in favor of Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, opposed? Two affirmative, three noes. Mrs. Ennis, congratulations. You are the chair for the upcoming year. I turn over the seat to you.
Okay. Thank you. But he moved down. Oh, we get a pick up nominations. Moving on the agenda, we'll now open nominations for vice chair. Do you have any motions? Mrs. Coonan?
I nominate Mr. Peterson.
You did? I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other nominations for vice chair? Call for the vote, please. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
No. And Madam Chair respectfully decline.
Okay. Mr. Peterson has declined the nomination, so that reopens the nomination.
I'll nominate Lyle Coonan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson first. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Congratulations, Mrs. Coonan. About time. And now I will open up the nominations for secretary. Come on, people.
No time like the present. I'll nominate Sandy Raveli, please.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other nominations? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Stain.
And I also vote yes. We have four in the affirmative, one abstention. And here we have our new committee. Okay, we're all set. All right, Mr. Wells, I guess you have a presentation that you have for us for an equipment grant and your credit increase for graduation requirements. Thank you for coming in.
Not a problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I would just like to notify the committee that Alton Baggett, through his dedication and hard work, was able to not only write a grant but secure a grant through the Janet Malser Humanities Trust Fund. And Oxford High School, if I may read, "Dear Mr. Baggett, we are pleased to inform you that we have decided to fully fund your quest in the amount of $6,730 as specified in the application. Please provide us with full account of how the funds are used and a public acknowledgement of our support. We are delighted to support your worthy project." And what Mr. Baggett will use this money for is the replacement of, we could say, retiring equipment and the replacement of broken equipment. So it will go right to, I guess from a technological standpoint, you'd call it hardware in the music department. So...
That's outstanding. What was the trust fund again?
It was the Janet Malser, M-A-L-S-E-R, Humanities Trust. And that's from Webster, serving in communities, I believe. It's of Webster, Dudley, and Oxford.
Excellent. Excellent. Any questions or comments from the committee? Very good. Thank you. Please, on our behalf, express our thanks.
I certainly shall.
That's a very good amount. That's great.
If I may, prior to discussing the credit recommendation for next year, we have been contacted by an organization, actually a corporation, that works through Walmart. And they have requested permission to use the Oxford High School logo, the pirate, if you will, to sell at our local Walmart various products, whether it be sweatpants, sweatshirts, t-shirts, jackets, as well as beach towels, I believe. And we would receive an eight percent, eight percent of the net profit would go to the Oxford High School.
What kind of an account would that go to?
Actually, I would look for the advice of the business manager, but I would say that it, if it's going to come to Oxford High School, my recommendation would be a student activity account where the money goes directly back to the kids. But if it's going to go into a district account, certainly, I think our business manager could point us in the right direction there as well.
Yeah. I believe the fax came over addressed to John Del Dorian, so I think this is geared towards athletics. So it's possible the student activities may be the right home. It's possible the athletic revolving fund may be the right home. Or it might turn out to be just general fund revenues. I need to research it a little bit more.
If you could let us know.
Absolutely.
All right, that'd be great. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Other schools do this, and I have bought merchandise at Walmart across the country on other schools. Lester's an example. Uxbridge, Grafton, you can probably contact them to see what they do with their account too at the same time.
Absolutely. That wouldn't be a problem.
Any other questions from the committee or comments? Thank you.
Next on the high school agenda for this evening, I'd like to request I had distributed to each and every one of you a copy of a request to increase graduation requirements. As we look to, I believe, through Mr. Superintendent, 2014, Common Core standards are going to require all comprehensive public high schools, or actually, I guess, all high schools that are public in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, will have to offer four years of a math. Currently, Oxford High School only offers three. This will not be designated at this time for that math, but what it will do is increase graduation requirements from 110 to 115. What I've found in my short three-year tenure is that an awful lot of students, by the time they reach their senior year, have already reached the verge of 110. And consequently, other than the mandate in our handbook of 20 credits in your senior year, there are electives that are overlooked, and these students are taking academic labs as their preference. So this will do two things for us. The first immediate impact would, and what I would also recommend is that next year's senior class be grandfathered in at 110. So the juniors, sophomores, and freshmen would need 115 to graduate, beginning in two years. That would give us enough time to make any adjustments. And for the most part, this would only impact, even in the graduating class on this Friday, it would only impact probably a dozen students. The vast majority of students graduating from Oxford High School are graduating in excess of 120 credits now.
They already are?
Yes.
Okay.
Each full-year course is worth five credits. Each half-year course is worth two and a half. Theoretically, in a seven-period day, best-case scenario, a student could have 35 credits annually.
With the proposed change, what kind of an offering are you looking for? For a class offering for the credit?
Well, no. It would be, the proposed change would be plus five. It would be listed as a, as an elective at this time.
So it'll only be electives?
As of right now. But I can tell you that as soon as, as a district, when we adopt the Common Core standards, there will be four years of a math that are required. At this point in time, there are only three.
Okay.
And obviously, that means that there's going to be one more whole class, which we're averaging in my three years in the vicinity of 120 to 122 or 3 graduating. So that many students are going to need to take a fourth year of math. So I'm indirectly trying to prepare you for an additional staff member in the future.
Good. That's good. Mr. Peterson?
Are any of those taking the four years now? I mean, you're saying we have 120 credits for most children going through here, and that's probably because of higher education requirements on certain levels. But what about the math situation? They're not taking the four years now, most of them anyway?
No. Well, I wouldn't, I'd have to look at that. I wouldn't want to give you an inaccurate statement. I could tell you that there are several students that are taking four years of a math. But to say that a majority are, that could very well be, I would have to check that.
Now, you're saying four years of math, but this is broken down differently than it used to be. Is this just starting with general math, to algebra, to trig, or whatever? What are the four maths?
The request before you this evening has nothing to do with the math.
Nothing to do with the math right now, right?
Correct. This has to do with raising the number of credits necessary to graduate from 110 to 115, and that can be in elective courses. And theoretically, it could be in two half-year courses of 2.5 credits per.
But what I'm getting at is 2014. What four maths will be required?
I wasn't prepared to go through that with you. I can have that answer for you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
For the most part, just off the cuff, it would be four maths, four general math classes. So it would probably, for the majority of students, would be in Algebra I, a geometry, and Algebra II, and a calc.
Okay. That's what I was getting at.
Anything else from the committee? Does this need a vote? Mr. Superintendent?
I believe so.
You're changing the credit status.
Since we're going to change the curriculum?
I think we should be quick.
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
I'll make a motion to adopt the graduation requirements to change them to 115, and also grandfathering in the seniors, the incoming seniors of next year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll call for the vote, please. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, five in the affirmative.
Thank you for your support.
Very much. Yes, thank you very much for your diligence in this also.
Next at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce two young ladies that are outstanding educators. Here at Oxford High School, we had the opportunity to keep our trip going abroad alive, so I'd like to introduce Ms. Cassandra Klimzik and Ms. Courtney Nugent, who would like to do a brief overview of their trip to Ireland, and also put before you the potentiality of going to Italy next year.
Ms. Nugent?
Thank you.
And Ms. Klimzik.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay. We'll speak into the microphone. I don't know. So the first thing that we have, we put together a PowerPoint, because we traveled to Ireland, Wales, and then England. So it was a long journey in our nine days, but it was totally worth it. So that's the first thing we'll present, and then we'll talk about, a little bit about what the students and ourselves learned, and then our proposal for the coming trip.
Okay.
We should put the picture immediately. That was great. Our PowerPoint probably could have been an hour long, or more. Because we both...
Trip of a lifetime.
Yeah. We both took a million pictures. But I'm sure that as you were able to see, we had the best weather that you could have asked for. So that was, I mean, that was luck for us. I told them all to bring raincoats, and you didn't need raincoats or rain boots. We were actually taking jackets and things off because it was so warm. We were able to see, like I said, three countries in our trip. We formed a great relationship with our tour guide named Ben. There was one of the pictures with him and our first tour guide, Lee. He was knowledgeable. Any questions anyone had, he was able to answer them. And that made our job a lot easier than, you know, having to field questions from students. On top of that, we were obviously a little nervous bringing students overseas, but it turned out that EF tours sets you up so that you really don't have to do any guessing. They pick you up right at the airport. You're brought to all of your destinations, and you, everything that you could ask for is basically provided for you. And so what Ms. Klimzik and I are here to propose is that for the April 2012 trip, to go to Italy, and I think you have the brochure in front of you now, and that would bring us to Florence as well as to Rome. And our hope would be, we were able to do two fundraisers at Papagino's, and those were to raise money for things such as the transportation from the school to the airport, as well as tips once we get there, because that's not included in your, in the fee that you pay. And they were successful. They were really successful, especially when you tell the kids that pizza's involved in any kind of fundraiser. And I think they really, get really excited about that. But our hope would be that if we were able to get it approved earlier, the trip, we could fundraise even more. So hopefully in the future, this wouldn't be for a few years, but students who maybe couldn't necessarily afford the full, like, the full cost of the trip could potentially, we could raise enough money so we could provide them with some aid, because it is such an amazing experience. And I would hope that more, even more students could go and wouldn't be held back because of financial reasons, so...
How many students went on this trip?
Nine.
Nine students. I think we're going to make that an agenda item for the future, to discuss the trips. I think the committee itself has a few questions on how we'd like to go forward with this. So what we'll do is we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll have Mr. Wells invite you in, so you can offer any feedback if you'd like.
Okay.
But it was, it looks like it was a trip of a lifetime for them, so...
And for us, so...
And for you, so that was great. That's very good. Any comments or questions from the committee? Okay. Thank you very much for bringing that in to us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Moving on the agenda, we'll go to the approval of minutes from May 9. Are there any corrections or anything to these minutes? These were executive session.
There's only one voting person available, and I don't know about, wait. Yes. Mrs. Coonan is the only one that can vote on this, and I'm not certain if you can move and second your own minutes or not. So I would request that both sets of minutes be held until we get clarification. Because the next one is the same situation, I'm the only one available that can vote on it.
Go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I anticipated that that would be a question. I did check with Mike Gilbert at MASC, and he wrote back, "The approval of minutes simply makes the document the official record of that meeting. While it is routinely ethical for a member not present at that meeting to abstain from voting on the minutes of that particular meeting, it is not illegal for them to do so. The chair can simply state that since only one member of the Kermit Committee was present at the meeting of such and such a date, all members may vote to approve these minutes as the record of that meeting."
Thank you.
So I just got the legal.
Okay. Thank you. So let's look at, instead of going to executive session, let's look at the regular meeting minutes for May 9. We'll take them that way. Any changes or corrections? I guess, Mrs. Coonan, if you have anything you want to change?
No.
Nothing? Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You can second. Yep. Okay. I'll call for the vote, please. Mr. Anderson?
Stain.
Mrs. Raveli?
It's my understanding, then I can vote him in just as they wish.
To make them, to make them part of the record, yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Yes. Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Stain.
And I vote yes. Two abstentions and three affirmative. Those meeting minutes are approved. Now we will look at the executive session for the May 9 meeting.
Move to accept.
Do I have a second? Thank you. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Anderson?
Stain.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Stain.
And I will vote yes. Two abstentions, three affirmative. Those are approved. And now we will go to the regular meeting. Well, it's a special meeting, actually, for May 16. It needs to be up to you, Mr. Peterson.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second also?
Second.
Thank you. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Anderson?
Stain.
Mrs. Raveli?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have one abstention, four affirmative. They are approved. Very good. Thank you very much. Moving down the agenda, we don't have any unfinished business. We have no further new business. I guess we can start with school committee members. I'm sorry, no. Superintendent of schools. Excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a couple of things to remind the committee for the upcoming meeting in June. I believe our next meeting is June 13. And typically at that meeting, we have a lot of business to cover. We have the summer reading list to approve. We have the handbook changes also to approve, and we have school improvement plans. So the entire administrative team will be here on that date. I've given everybody a deadline of May 31, June 1, to get all of that information in to central office with the goal to turn it around and have it in the committee's hands much in advance of June 13. Ideally, if I could get it to you in a week in advance, I will do my best that way, because there's so much to process and so much material, that the committee would have all of that information. And then during the week, if there were specific questions, you could certainly get in touch with myself or the building principals if there were specific clarity that you need, and we would be able then to proceed on the 13th.
All right. Very good.
And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just one more.
Yes, go ahead.
We are in the middle of a busy, busy senior week, and I know that not only our seniors, but our juniors and all of us in town are driving very carefully this week. It is a busy time of year for many people, and I just wanted to urge extreme caution and for all of us behind the wheel to make good decisions, not only this week, but in the summer as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthew?
I did include the monthly update in the packets, as this is the second meeting of the month. On that report, you can see the transfers of monies for the Ed Jobs bills. That certainly, the passage at town meeting helped the school department out and helped to increase our available funds. and helped to increase our available funds by about $18,000, which is good as we close the year. I do have some additional transfers that I had said that I would bring forward at tonight's meeting, but I have to confess, I completely forgot to print those out tonight. So I'm going to have to email them, and I won't ask you guys to vote on them. But if they are enacted as recommended, these are the balances that you would see. My apologies for that, that's not typical oversight on my part. But in general, I think we're closing out the year as well as can be expected. You know, every, each and every administrator in the district, and unfortunately, a lot of the other staff as well, has had to live without this year. We've made do, and, you know, that's the commitment that everybody has in this district, and everybody has done a fantastic job of not overrequesting, not saying, "But we really need, but we really need." They understand the circumstances, and everybody has, you know, lived up to them. It's been, it's been a joy to work in that particular area this year, absolutely.
That's good to hear, thank you very much. Now we'll go to our school committee members. Mr. Peterson?
I have a couple quick ones tonight. I appreciate Mr. Wells reporting on the Walmart situation, and I'd like to thank you and Mr. Daldorian for pursuing that. It's good, and finally be great to see Oxford's merchandise sold, not just the other communities around here in one of their stores. I know that we have our own store here, and I don't feel it'll really cut into you that much there, so hopefully it'll get some more of our goods out there, all right? I was not able to, for emergency purposes, make the last meeting, and I publicly would like to thank Pat Dewidzik and Mr. Bill Spitz, who have retired from the committee, didn't seek reelection. And I would like to thank them for their services that they provided to us, not only as school committee members for the past six years, but they have served the children of this school district in numerous ways, from the Booster Club to other, other functions that they have done throughout their careers and living here in Oxford. So again, to Pat and Bill, thank you very much. I passed out to the rest of the members. I attended the Mass Association of School Committee Members Legislative Committee Meeting, which I serve on. I think that was, I don't have the date on it, but you have it in front of you. There's the report of the agenda that we had and the bills that we are going to pursue and sponsor, and the ones that we have recommended to reject to the legislators at this point in time. We will again be meeting the 23rd, and there'll be some other bills that will be considered. Those are the only ones that we had time to get through at this point in time. In about a three-hour meeting, I think there were like about 24 items on that agenda, and that's all we had time to accomplish that night. So we are reconvening. I will be meeting with our council and a few of the senators and legislators on Beacon Hill next week, prior to that meeting, to iron out some other issues and other legislation that we're trying to sponsor and get them to onboard with us. I also attended the OHS concert, and I'd like to thank you, Mr. Wells, and Mr. Baggett, and the students especially. It's probably one of the best concerts that my wife and I have attended in a long time. The selections were excellent. The performance was outstanding. And I'd like to commend the high school and the music staff in the department for their spring concert, it was exceptional. We also attended the sports banquet, and every year, never ceases to amaze me. We have probably 50% of our students that are athletes, musical members, as well as academic members. For a small school, that's a tribute and a very high accomplishment. And one of the, one of the items that was shown to us and presented, and I believe, I think you said, Mr. Wells, it was sponsored by last year's graduating class, the new track record board. You go into the gymnasium, you see all kinds of flags up there for basketball, Carla Barubi, all the way back to 70s for records for basketball, baseball, everything else. They added a marquee for track records. And it was nice to see it, but on the same token, three of my daughter's records from 1990 have now fallen, so her name is no longer on the board. One still exists, but it's a real tribute to see what's, what's happening here, athletically as well as academically, and what they strive for. And this just brings a little pride to the, the track and field and cross-country, as well as the other athletics that are posted in our gymnasium. So again, thank you for that, and thank the graduating class. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Coonan?
I really have nothing tonight, other than looking forward to a busy and exciting senior week.
Yes, we are. Mrs. Ravelli? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to thank the people who voted for me, even though there wasn't much of a race. I do have a lot to talk about, but I'm new at this, and I feel that I probably will make a mistake. But there's a lot of people talking about money issues, and I know I started in '94, and I'm going to throw to custodians, everybody knows I'm a custodian by now. We had 27 people, we're down to 11 and a half. Sacrificial lambs have now been gone. Now we're starting on the teachers. In the 21 years, when I started in 1990, I have never once seen an administrator cut or lost. I've been working on some figures, and eventually, I would like to go into an executive session to discuss this with everybody. I also would like to see the expense that we're paying on PC Plus to come in to repair computers, if I can see that. And I believe we hired, or we're in the process of hiring, a behavioral person. Has that been done yet? Mr. Himmelberger?
Through the chair, please, Mr. Anderson.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, through the chair to Mr. Himmelberger.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Anderson's question, that position is in the process of being filled, yes.
Okay, well, like I said, I will ask for my executive session very shortly. Next time, next, Mr. Himmelberger said that we have a busy week next meeting, so after graduation, we will go in.
That's fine. Yeah, you can discuss that with me, and we will set that up, absolutely. Okay. I, I have a couple things tonight. First of all, welcome to the new members. The campaign was vigorous. That's the way the campaign seemed to be going in this community lately.
Tough.
It's tough, it's a tough ball to haul, that's for sure. But, you know, congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. I would like to ask the superintendent to please make sure that both of our new members have their policy manuals, and if we could, please have their contact numbers and emails. If you access email, you'll, you'll find, as a chair, I try to do a lot of things that way, so we keep everybody posted of what's going on and how things are going, and whatever information needs to, needs to be deciphered. I try to do it that way with the superintendent. Speaking that, we do have a town employee on the committee. Some of us on the committee have been getting some feedback of how the meeting is going to go. So I am going to ask Mr. Himmelberger that we contact our legal counsel and make sure that we maintain the integrity of this committee. We don't cross any boundaries. We don't, we don't interfere, I guess is the best way with mass general law, that we follow the policy and procedures set forth in open meeting and with executive session as, as appropriate, okay? So I just want to protect the committee, protect Mr. Anderson, and make sure that we operate and function properly. We do have a busy week. We look forward to be, you know, being at graduation. I think you'll find that's one of the, one of the best events that we have, and Mr. Wells puts on a nice little priority for us. So we look forward to, to that also. And thank you, ladies, very much for everything and coming in. I have been away. Been on a little vacation, if you must, but I'm fine. But I did want to say that I, the last event I got to attend was, what was it? National Honor Society here. And that was one of the best. The best, that's why I'm saying it, because she's here. It was the best, most moving night I can remember from all the school things I've gone to. When you had the teachers recognized, you had those students recognize those teachers. And they were from elementary school, from the middle school, from high school, retirees. That was outstanding. That was just outstanding. And I have to tell you, some of those teachers I've spoken to since, and they still are like, "I can't believe that they remembered me." So the impact of a good teacher is really paramount. It just is, it's life-changing. So thank you so much for doing that, and I hope you continue. I hope that becomes part of the tradition, because it was an outstanding night. It really was, so, thank you very much. And that is all I have this evening. Does anyone have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Very good, sir.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.